Good evening, everyone. With this meeting of the Osseo Area School Board, please come to order. Tonight is August 22nd, 2017. The time is 6:04 PM. Seated in front of you from my left is Director Stephanie Fortner, Director Heather Douglas, Director Mike Ostaffy, myself, Robert Gerhart, Director Jim Brigette, Director Jessica Craig, and Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Kate McGuire. Would you all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
All right. Board members, in front of you is the agenda as printed. Are there any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, I move that we accept the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
With that, the agenda is accepted. Next up is audience opportunity to address the school board. Before we have the audience opportunity, we read through standardized set of parameters. The Osseo Area School Board provides an opportunity for members of the audience to address the board, and we have, I think, five, six speakers who wish to address the board tonight. Before we start, I'll highlight a few of the guidelines for this item on the agenda. When called upon, please state your name and topic. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a whole, not to any specific members or to any person who is not a member of the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We'll provide a 30-second notice before your time is up, and longer time may be granted at the discretion of the board chair. The board and administration will listen to comments and ask clarifying questions if needed. The board chair may delegate responsibility to the superintendent or the superintendent's designee to follow up with the speaker within a few days following the meeting. Comments and interactions between board members and the public are expected to be respectful, courteous, professional, and civil. Speakers may not address criticism toward an individual district employee as such concerns should be directed privately to the employee supervisor or higher-level administrator. So with that, our first speaker for the night is Fata Akoi. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to be back. Hello again. My name is Fata Akoi, and I'm the education organizer for African immigrant services. And I'm here just to show support, excuse me, for revised District Wellness Policy 533. As one of the organizers of the May 22nd Wellness Focus Group, accompanied by community leaders, external partners from major institutions such as the University of Minnesota, Action for Healthy Kids, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and Hennepin County Ship, AIS, among with other leaders in health and wellness, worked with the Food and Nutrition Department along with community input as an effort to improve the health and wellness policy. This was a community effort, and I'm proud to say that the May 22nd Focus Group was a model for other departments within the district to seek community input on policies that directly affect the lived experiences of students, all students in Osseo Area Schools. Thank you to all the community members who are here to show support, who actually participated in the focus group that we had. For the first time in the history of the district, a community of culturally diverse stakeholders, parents, students, teachers, community leaders, and school officials came together to design and revise, review, the district health and wellness policy. The participants of the focus group unanimously agreed that the updated policy was a welcomed improvement and that the revised policy, along with the feedback from the policy committee, was accepted and that this was a more culturally responsive and equitable policy. Based on our feedback, Osseo Area Schools' Food and Nutrition Department is working on informative videos for families to talk about free and reduced lunch, labeling, allergens, payment, based on the parental feedback from the focus group about the lack of understanding about the department and what it offers students within the district. We are glad to see that the community voices have been placed at the forefront of this policy, and we hope that this sets an example for other policies that the district decides to work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker for tonight is Abdullah Kiotamba.
Members of the board, I'd just like to re-echo or reemphasize and reinforce what Fata had just said. I think that when we begin this journey with the district, our goal was simple. The communities that have been left behind, their voices have been marginalized. They should be involved in decision that disproportionately affect them. And I think this journey has took us through many paths, but ultimately it produced outcomes that we think show that the district is committed. And that's why we respect the work of the superintendent of the district, Kid McGuire, and especially Tom from the Food and Nutrition Department. He's doing a wonderful job with his team, just organizing the focus group, working with different cultural communities and placing them at the center of issues in all different communities. We think that health and wellness addresses the need of all students. Not only one group of students, but all students. When students are healthy according to research, the attention to learning and improvement is huge. We also like to thank some of the partners, University of Minnesota Department of Nutrition, University of Minnesota Extension, the Blue Cross Blue Shield, Action for Healthy Kids, and all of our partners, the department, and everybody, especially the leaders of our communities that were involved in the focus group, who want to make sure their voices are reflected in any policy that has to do with their kids. So we'd like to thank the leadership of the district, the community. And this is a partnership. This is a win-win, and we think the more win-win we have, it is better. So we'd like to support this policy. We think it is a welcome development. It is set in model and a precedent that ought a district, for the first time in the history of the Department of Nutrition, for communities to think it is even useful, it is even productive to be at a table and share their perspective, share their experience, and share some of the unique cultural aspect of their life. So we just want to say thank you to everybody. This is a collective work and want to make collective progress. As part of this work, the OHWP project is intended to work. We have a signature, more than 50 persons, that says, "I'm pleasured to work on health and wellness in the district." We think this is a huge improvement. We want to see it grow and expand. So also like to thank some of the board members that actually went to Mike, actually attended the focus group, and I'm sure that every board member was out, but everybody. But we'd just like to say thank you so much, and let's make it work, and let's work together and build our communities and the future of our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Murugui Mutiga.
Hello, my name is Murugui, and I am a stakeholder working in the community with African immigrant services. And I'm here to show support for the district wellness policy. I was a participant in the May 22nd Wellness Group led by African immigrant services, and for the first time in history of the district, a community of diverse stakeholders, parents, teachers, community leaders, came together to the district wellness and to work on the health and wellness policy. And as participants of the focus group, we unanimously agreed that the updated policy was a welcome improvement. And after revision work by AIS team and the revised policy, after additional focus group suggestions, represented a more culturally responsive and equitable process. So we've started to see and are very excited about the changes that we are seeing in the Foods and Nutrition Department and the community, and also both sides, also in the community, wanting to be more engaged. And then, so we are glad to see community voices at the forefront of this policy, and we hope that this sets an example for other policies that the district decides to work on. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Abraham Ba.
Hello to all. My name is Abraham Brahman Ba. I'm first a parent and also a chairman of the labyrinth community in Minnesota. I represent over 35,000 laborers in the state of Minnesota, and I was a member of the District Awareness Focus Group that was organized on May 22nd. And I think, for the first time, let me tell you this straight, official, thank you for organizing such a wonderful program. And we like such a program because it get our involvement into it, our voice is heard into it, and because of that thing will be a success. And I just want to say I support this program in full, and I have also spoke to a lot of parents from my community, and they also say, "As you understand, I greeting to you people," and this is what they really want. They want for us to be engaged in the school district. They want our full commitment, and they also want like a partnership with the community. So let me say my thanks to the AIS for a wonderful work we've done, and I hope this will not be the first time. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the message that you brought. Our next speaker is, and you have to excuse me for this, Severin Weyah? I apologize if I misread the handwriting.
Yeah, very close to that. Sewon Weyah is my name. In the community, I'm a parent, and also I just want to be here and express my support to what the district has done. I also participated in the May 22nd Wellness Program Focus Group led by African immigrant services. For the first time, we all acknowledge that the Osseo Area School, a community of culture diverse, stakeholder, invited all of us to come together to design awareness, health, and awareness policy that will impact the students of our community. As participant of the focus group, we all agree that updated policy, the updated policy that we adopted, there was a huge progress, and we are glad to see this community voices at the forefront of this policy, and we hope that this sets an example for others to, an example for all the policies that the district decides to work on. So I just want to express my thanks and appreciation to the board members and also to AIS for spear leading this approach that will bring all of us together to be able to work and foster the health and awareness program of the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our final speaker for the night is Imam Mohammed Dekhuli. Good to see you again, Imam.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'd like to thank you for welcoming us also to speak to you. Mine is not too hard to say. I'm here to support this process because we believe that the voice of the voiceless communities are being heard. And secondly, I believe inclusiveness in these processes will help us and our community members to feel represented here. I know that even when we went to the focus group, one of the things that I saw there, we saw different cultural and traditional food brought there. And I was wondering, I said, "Well, perhaps the policy had been adopted." Because I saw food from Asian community, African food, all kinds of food from different areas. And so one of the reasons why I think we should, if I may appeal to your indulgence, to adopt this, and perhaps everybody should vote for it, is that after we had a focus group, the school district went to work. Because my daughter was coming here, and they were going into kitchen, in the kitchens, and trying different flavors of what they're trying to prepare when the school is open. I used to bring her in the morning, early in the morning, and pick her up. So this tells me that the district and the board is prepared to do something about this. So can you imagine how those children who were hired to come here into different school areas get to know that, one way or the other, the policy had not been adopted? So can you imagine what the exercise that they've done in the past would mean today? You know, they would be very disappointed. But I have no reason to doubt that tonight, that it's going to be a unanimous vote on this policy because we feel really part and parcel of this.
Thirty seconds.
Say that again.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thirty second? I would just finish. Since you added, so I can use the 30 second to say, you know. So we are appealing to you to actually, to adopt this. And we look forward to working with you on other policies that we have improved and also implement your inspiring mission statement over there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we had one lead entry. Mahmadi Sissi?
Thank you very much. My name is Mahmadi Bangali Sissi. I'm a father to three beautiful girls who go to, who attend Maple Grove Elementary School. I'm also a community leader. I was part of the Wellness Policy Focus Group led by the African immigrant services. I think we all know that the food we eat defines who we are. And the cultural change and the diversity that we see in the district demands that we have to pay attention to that. So we all, as a group, left the focus group discussion with an agreement that the updated policy should be considered very seriously by you here tonight. So the adoption of that policy will bring satisfaction to our community, and it will also bring satisfaction to the district as well. So we are glad tonight that the voices of our community, those who attended the focus group, will be passed by you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, board members, next up on our agenda would be the superintendent's report. I'll hand it over to Dr. Kate McGuire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A regular part of the superintendent's report is to share points of pride. Points of pride celebrate students, staff, and community members who are contributing to the accomplishment of our mission, which is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning. And I've asked cabinet members to share those points of pride tonight.
In the category of achieving dreams, Palmer Kraus and Hannah Tyson, 2017 graduates of Maple Grove Senior High, were named two of the four Triple Threat Award winners at Hennepin Theater Trust's annual Spotlight Showcase in June. Triple Threat winners demonstrate excellence in singing, acting, and dancing, as well as community leadership, teamwork, and artistry. More than 80 high school juniors and seniors across Minnesota applied for the award. Kraus and Tyson are the first Osseo Area School students to receive this honor.
A 2016 Maple Grove Senior High alumna is among this year's ambassadors in the Minneapolis Aquatennial Ambassador Program. Ellie Brimeyer will represent the Minneapolis Aquatennial at nearly 300 community festivals and events in North America throughout the next year. Osseo Senior High grad Bashirro Korma was elected as day student body president at Augsburg College for the 2017-2018 school year. During his senior year at Osseo, Bashirro was named an Act VI Scholar, and last spring he earned a Newman Civic Fellowship at Augsburg. He has also served as a Brooklyn Bridge Alliance for Youth intern for our district's community education program.
In the category of contributing to community, Ela Kunad, an eighth grader at Maple Grove Middle School, created a mural to show her school's commitment to equity. The mural, which will be displayed at the school, features a woman with a variety of colors in her hair, representing the skin tones of people who attend and work at the school. The rainbow depicted in the young woman's eyes symbolizes peace and understanding.
Osseo Schools and the City of Maple Grove Parks and Recreation Department partnered to update playgrounds at Elm Creek, Rice Lake, and Rush Creek Elementary Schools this summer. The city worked with stakeholders at each school in a collaborative process to generate ideas and solicit feedback. As part of her Girl Scouts Gold Award, Maple Grove Senior High junior Megan Goshen collected 22 musical instruments and donated them to Osseo Area Schools. The donated items will allow students to have more options for choosing an instrument they prefer when participating in music programs at school.
In the category of lifelong learning, summer Kid Stop students at Weaver Lake Elementary have had a busy summer of learning and discovery. From gleaning cake decorating tips from Nadia Cakes' Erin Campbell to understanding weather cycles with K-11 meteorologist Jeff Edmondson, there was no shortage of weekly adventures for students.
In our category of mission-driven employees, several Osseo Area Schools principals made personal connections with residents of their school communities during this year's National Night Out. Shown in this photo are Elm Creek Principal Beth Ness, Maple Grove Senior High Principal Bart Becker, Osseo Senior High Principal Michael Leehan, and Maple Grove Middle Assistant Principal Sarah Luby, along with members of the Maple Grove Police Department.
Emily Bollinger, English teacher at Park Center Senior High, was selected to participate in the Bridging Cultures Initiative last month. Through this national program, Bollinger exchanged ideas and perspectives with eight other U.S. teachers and 20 teachers from across the globe. This opportunity was funded by the U.S. Department of Education and sponsored by the Illinois Northwestern African Students Consortium.
Kindergarten teacher Marcy Ronnie was named Best Elementary Teacher by Maple Grove Magazine. Ronnie has more than 20 years of teaching experience in Osseo Area Schools. This fall, she'll be bringing her teaching talents to Cedar Island Elementary.
Thank you. I have just a couple of other pieces of news from my superintendent's report. I'd like to talk just briefly first about our MCA scores. Earlier this month, the Minnesota Department of Education released the results of the 2017 Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, or the MCAs. The MCAs measure student progress towards state academic standards in reading, math, and science. They are one measure that schools and districts use to monitor student achievement. Results for Osseo Area Schools showed that our students' proficiency in reading, math, and science continued to hold steady compared to previous years. Our new Director of Research Assessment and Accountability, Angela Frees, noted that while we're pleased with our maintenance of proficiency for some student groups, we remain focused on ensuring high levels of achievement for all students and accelerating growth for students who are underperforming in order to close the achievement gap. MCA results, along with the additional site-based student performance data, are used by schools to develop continuous improvement plans that aim to ensure equitable student achievement for each student. And we'll be diving into not only MCA scores, but all other student achievement results at our October work session. Our District 279 Foundation Fun Run was held on Saturday, August 12th, at the Elm Creek Park Reserve. District 279 Foundation partners with Kid Stop, our school district's school age care program, to coordinate this healthy and social opportunity to advocate that reading is fun. Over 450 community members attended, including 250 runners, 20 business sponsors, and five media partners. School board member and District 279 Foundation liaison Stephanie Fortner also attended. Special thanks to all of the volunteers, sponsors, and participants that helped raise more than $7,000 to purchase learning resources for media centers in Osseo Area Schools. Lastly, I would like to acknowledge our Chief Technology Officer, Tim Wilson, who is attending his last school board meeting tonight. And Tim told me before the meeting that he estimates that he has attended almost 300 school board meetings of one kind or another. 300. Tim is leaving our organization for another position. Tim was the very first Chief Technology Officer for Osseo Area Schools and has served in that position for the past nine years. Under Tim's leadership, our use of digital tools to transform instruction and personalized learning has grown from a very small one-building, in fact, Bring Your Own Initiative, to a comprehensive initiative on digital learning with one-to-one devices. I want to thank Tim for his leadership and contributions to Osseo Area Schools. So thank you, Tim. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. McGuire, and thank you, Tim. Next up on our school board agenda is school board reports. Our first report is an August 15, 2017 work session report. Dr. Craig?
Thank you.
I just got a promotion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The school board held a work session on August 15, 2017, to discuss two topics: budget planning for fiscal year 2019 and iPad management. During the budget planning section, board members reviewed the district's long-range financial planning process, including the long-range financial model, annual budget framework, and budget planning tools. Staff shared information about how schools receive revenue through the state-determined process of certifying a levy. Staff recommended that the board certify the preliminary levy at the maximum allowable in September, which will provide staff time to verify state calculations prior to presenting a recommendation for final levy certification in December. Board members requested additional discussion at the September 12th work session about specific levies that are tied to state aid. Board members were also encouraged to read the Minnesota House of Representatives' Fiscal Analysis Department publication, Financing Education in Minnesota, prior to the September meeting. Staff then presented information about expenditure budget development, which begins in October. Board members reviewed planning tools such as the timeline and the financial forecast, which looks four years back and five years forward, and learned how various assumptions affect projections. Board members expressed interest in learning more about expenditures attributed to consultants during the upcoming budgeting process. Following the budget portion of the work session, board members learned about iPad management from members of the Instructional and Information Technology Team. Board members heard an overview of the iPad collection and redeployment process, repair costs, replacement costs, and process improvements made over the past three years. Board members identified three key issues for which they recommend action. One, recovery and repair costs. Staff will continue to seek multiple ways to reduce costs. Two, iPad protection plan. Board members recommended that iPad protection costs be paid from district capital instead of a family purchase protection plan effective next school year. Staff will reduce the cost of this year's protection plan to $20 per student. Three, greater accountability for use of iPads. A student's signature will be required on the iPad agreement in order for students to be provided an iPad. At the end of the work session, the board chair proposed creating a time-specific opportunity at the end of each work session for board members to surface topics of interest that they may wish to bring forward for future consideration. All school board work sessions are open to the public and are audiotaped. Members of the public can access audio recordings of work sessions on the district website.
Thank you. Board members, are there any other school board reports? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Our next item is a presentation, Brooklyn Bridge Alliance for Youth. Brian Severson Hall and Rebecca Gilgan. Welcome, Brian. Welcome back, Rebecca.
Thank you, Chair Gerhart, school board members, and Dr. McGuire. My name is Brian Severson Hall. I'm the Executive Director of Community Engagement for the school district, and it's my pleasure to introduce our presenter for this evening. As you guys are aware, one of our three brand promises in our school district revolves around partnerships. And we've invited Rebecca Gilgan, the Executive Director of the Brooklyn Bridge Alliance for Youth, to talk about our outstanding partnership we have with that organization. So Rebecca.
Thanks, Brian.
Good evening. Chair Gerhart, members of the board, Dr. McGuire. I'd like to give a shout-out to Jessica Craig, who is our liaison of this board to our board. Thanks for the introduction, Brian. A little bit about the alliance. We are a joint powers agreement between nine public sector partners. So we bring together the two colleges, the two cities of Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park, Hennepin County. I always take a big breath before I do this part, because it's a lot of folks. About 90 people altogether, working in different workgroups from all of those different organizations. And we come together to accomplish- And we come together to accomplish one thing: to coordinate a system of high-quality, accessible, and fully-resourced opportunities for young people that help them graduate, find their pathway to college and career, and make sure that they are safe and well. Back in December, we brought together about a hundred and twenty folks there. And I think if you, Brian Severson Hall and Dr. McGuire are in that picture, the first one to find them wins a prize. We brought all these folks together at North Hennepin Community College and with our youth facilitative leaders, we had a youth and adult event to create our strategic plan for the alliance. To accomplish that mission, we weren't going to just operate programs. That was not our focus. These five strategies emerged. One, we would coordinate and pull together all of those public sector partners to work differently together. We would focus on equitable access. We'd focus on channeling resources from the private sector and other public sector partners to the programs that our partners operate, not that the alliance operates, but that our partners operate. And to make sure that we were providing support to increase the quality of already-existing programs in our community, to get better outcomes for kids. Lastly, and most importantly, we know that in order to do things differently, we need to have different people at the table, and youth engagement is a key, critical aspect of that, of bringing young people, the customers of our systems, to the table to participate in the decision-making, but also in the delivery of the work. So, tonight I want to share two highlights from our work over the last couple of months. And one is to share the story of Brooklink, our summer youth employment program, and how we've coordinated that partnership. And the other is our expansion of youth leadership through our Motivation Youth Festival. And I'll be honest with you, you guys know I usually bring a young person to facilitate with me. And summer was so exhausting. They're all getting ready for school. They said, "This one, you're on your own on this one." So, you get me tonight. So, but I did bring you guys a present. Ooh, fade out. That was nice. Okay, so, the Brooklink Youth Employment Program. So, you guys have heard about this in the community a little bit, hopefully. We've been developing this program since 2015. You might have heard of the Step Up Model in Minneapolis. We fundraised, because we knew that we had a gap. We needed youth employment programming. And the employers in our community needed pipeline to the young people. They needed young people who were ready to work for them. So, we built this program. This summer, we expanded. So, the blue pieces are what we've done, right? We find young people. We find employers. We match them up. We do the summer internships. This year, we added, we said, "We need to have a broader impact." So, we launched a regional youth job fair that brought together kids who just needed their first jobs, maybe not a summer internship, but a job year-round. And we also are launching the Alumni Network. This is a critical aspect for our employers, who are investing in these high school internships, but say, "You know, I need that kid when they get out of college. I'd like to maintain that relationship so that we can continue this pipeline into our businesses." And so, we're building the Alumni Network now. The other highlight about Brooklink, before I get too far ahead of myself, is staff said, "You know, Rebecca, talk a little bit about this summer." And what happened this summer, and I don't want to overestimate, overstate this, but we had a ninety-seven percent completion rate of kids completing their summer internship. These kids come from a variety of backgrounds, and I'll tell you the key to that, besides the young people themselves having a passion and their parental support, are supervisors that took the time and the space out of their work to coach these young people in their first job placement. I think Osseo had ten internships this year. An example of an employer partner who sees it as a critical need for themselves in diversifying and engaging the community and pipelining to their own organization, but also providing the staff that can really engage these young people and make sure that these are successful opportunities. See, the alliance has been leading the comprehensive evaluation. And is the data guy in here, data lady? The new person? Are they here? Yes? No? No? Okay, no. When I say comprehensive, I mean every nook and cranny of this program we've been measuring. And there's a couple of highlights that I'll make today. The young people walked away with about $150,000 in cash to them and their families this summer. We think that this is a really important piece of our community building, knowing that many of these youth are low-income. And this is, when a kid brings home $2,000, $2,500 for some of them, that's a big deal to a family whose take-home is $50,000, right? It changes the dynamic between that young, that fifteen-year-old, Kelly, you're shaking your head, because you know it changes that dynamic between that sixteen-year-old and their parent, and that's the kind of positive thing we're trying to create in a family. On the employer's side of things, employers left with about 15,000 hours of estimated work that was provided by these youths. They pledged a hundred and four internships. Sixty-six different departments participated. So, we had internships in marketing departments, in manufacturing, in park and recreation programs, you name it. So, Brooklink has grown, and our role with Brooklink has been to incubate and grow this program and not to operate it for the rest of our lives. Now, I love you, Brooklink, but you got to go. So, we have been working with our two city partners very closely from the very beginning of this program, because we knew that this was a community development strategy. This was a youth program, but the intention here is to increase the economic health and well-being of the cities of Brooklyn Center and Brooklyn Park. The cities, and let's give a little shout-out to the city of Brooklyn Park just last night, passed a cooperation agreement, which is one step. Step two is the city of Brooklyn Center will pass this agreement in a week. And the outline is, they're going to work together to implement this program, equal partnership. They will create an advisory that includes young people, so alumni of the Brooklink program. And they're going to fund a portion of it. We're still going to be involved with the fundraising and the program evaluation as we transition this program. But if I think about what the job of an intermediary is in your community, it's to do this. It's to help our partners accomplish their mission. The cities have a mission around economic health and well-being for their citizens. This is now, as mayor, as the mayors would say, this is a tool by which they can accomplish that mission that didn't exist three years ago. So, this is an exciting step for our partners. The other piece this summer, why I might look a little bleary-eyed, is that we spent the summer really diving into youth engagement and leadership. Many of you know we facilitate the Brooklyn's Youth Council. The mission of the BYC is to represent youth in Brooklyn Center and Brooklyn Park by providing voice and collaboration with community and local government to create opportunities for youth that face barriers to success. You saw BK earlier. He's one of our shiny stars, but that young man's a great leader. This is not a program. This is one of our most effective work groups at the alliance. They take action on our strategic plan. And the present that I brought for you is that little data piece. Do you guys have your little data map? This? I know what the kids would say to me right now, "Becky, you brought them data? That's not a present. You should have brought them one of the temporary tattoos from MYF. That would have been cooler." But, so, I'll bring you data treats. So, MYF, the Brooklyn's Youth Council, we did this youth survey in 2016. We asked young people, "What are some of the issues that you face? If you look under the challenges to life success." This is really where the BYC focused and said, you know, responsibilities at home and work, those aren't going to change. And they didn't feel they could take action on that. Same thing with problems at school. They said, "We want to partner with our school partners, but it's getting to be summertime. What can we do?" And they said, "You know what? Let's host an event where we can let young people know that they have support and that they can be, and to motivate them, to inspire them to do well at school, to be connected, to build relationships." So, they looked at that data and said, "We can do something about that." So, back in May, literally, they said, "Hey, let's do a big event." And then, our staff, eight BYCers, eight adults from the community, from the police departments, came together and for three months planned every Friday, every single nook and cranny of this event, with youth voice at the front and center in the decision-making, which drove me crazy, because it took forever to make decisions. But I was appreciating that, because this event was truly inspirational for our team. Nutshell of it was, it was the first time that the alliance had a youth-led event in partnership. We held it at the Centennial Park over in Brooklyn Center. Huge stage, talent show. We brought together the community, and really, like the young people said, was to show youth that the community supports them. So, a little bit of the outcomes, we had sixteen different performers and motivational speakers, eighteen different food vendors and activities, ranging from Hy-Vee, who was offering jobs, to the SWAT vehicle, if you haven't seen this, a little frightening, but the SWAT vehicle from Brooklyn Park that the kids said that they wanted there. Teaching young people about the jobs and opportunities in law enforcement, right? A hundred percent, so about seventy-five to a hundred young people showed up, teens and families. So, this was an event for families as well. And a hundred percent of those folks that we spoke to thought the event was great, which made me nervous, because I was like, "Oh, great. We got to do this again." Click a little bit on this video. One of our interns this summer put this video together that kind of captured the day.
Hi, this is MYF, and we hope you have a great day.
Hey, I'm Martha Lynn. I'm from the Brooklyn Youth Council. Make sure to have fun.
What is your name and how old are you?
My name is Leila and I'm thirteen.
Awesome. And how about you?
My name is Dean. I'm seventeen.
How are you guys liking the event so far? What has been your favorite part?
I liked the part where the boys had drums.
Oh, awesome. How about you?
The food.
I like the event.
Yes? How about you?
I like the games over there.
You like the games?
I am Caitlin, and I am seven years old.
And how about you?
I am Chloe, and you're not seven years old. You're eight.
My favorite part was the games and being with my family.
The music has been amazing. The DJ is awesome. And mainly just seeing the youths today take charge and just kind of lead this has been an awesome experience as well. My role for today is to offer youths in the community information on wellness, being active, and also informing them on the different job opportunities that Hy-Vee has to offer currently.
I'm actually happy to be here, because I get to engage with the youth. That's my job.
What has been your favorite part of the event so far?
Beatbox. Beatbox. Amazing. Amazing, right?
If we were to have this event next year, would you come?
Yeah.
I want it to go again.
Sounds good. Thank you so much for letting me interview you.
Back to my very exciting PowerPoint. That was MYF. You saw that cop breakdancing. I think the best, whoa. I don't know what you got next, Peter. That cop has had his body cam on that entire time. And so, Chief Gannon said, "Okay, we're putting that online." You know, with everything out in the world right now, a good laugh of cop breakdancing is maybe a little bit of what's needed. So, now that summer's over, you guys are all getting geared up for school year. And we're all, every single one of my staff took off. They're like, "I need a break. We need to go on vacation." But what's next for the alliance? So, our business and our strategic plan is about accelerating youth success. Our focus till the end of this year is to transition Brooklink to our city partners and then celebrate that success. We'll also be engaging a new group of youth leaders. As you know, kids graduate, so we have almost an entirely new Brooklyn's Youth Council starting. And we're also launching a youth engagement initiative called the Youth as Facilitative Leaders Training. I'm very excited. Dr. McGuire and I just finished our plans. We'll be hosting it here at the end of September at the ESC to train young people in the top facilitation methods. These were the same methods that we used in our strategic planning process for the alliance. We see this as a great opportunity to give young people the skills they need to be at the table with adults in a leadership role. As we transition out Brooklink, we'll be looking for the next big thing that our community needs, the major issue that has been on the forefront and has been asking for a response. And you guys spoke a little bit about it tonight in terms of health and wellness. Is that we'll be beginning a feasibility study with Hennepin County ship to explore how we can increase young people's safety and well-being with a primary focus on physical activity, sports, and health and well-being. So, we'll be learning more over the next six months about what the community needs, how do we build culturally competent, responsive, engaging? How do we build what's already happening in community and connect the dots so we can be more efficient and effective with what's out there? And so, we can impact young people more with what we have, so. And lots more fun stuff that I'm not going to talk about tonight. So, you'll have to see next year when I come back. So, thank you very much for your time today. And I just want to say thank you so much to Brian and Dr. McGuire, and really, all of the Osseo staff that stay engaged with our work. And I almost called you Dr. Craig again. That was effective.
That's my fault.
I'm just saying, no, that's your special gift, is what that is. So, thank you for supporting students that live in Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park, and all the work that we're doing at the alliance. We appreciate it. Questions?
Board members, any questions?
Thank you, Rebecca, for all the work that you do with the organization.
Thanks.
Your passion is contagious. The kids, the way that you connect with the kids
Thanks.
is amazing, and it's great, even at board meetings, that the kids are engaged and they're speaking with our mayors, and it's such a great organization. So, thank you for all the work that you do, all the fundraising that you do. And we appreciate you. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Board members, anybody else? Questions? I have one. You mentioned, you know, some of the business partners, you said that some of the work that's been done with Osseo schools, Hy-Vee was in the mix. Are there any other businesses that we would like to give a shout-out to?
Oh, well, yes, I would. Thank you very much. We've worked with, so, fourteen employer partners this year. Boston Scientific, who's just around the corner, has been, and Commons Power Systems. Both have been one of those corporate partners that see both their internal business need to connect, but then also their philanthropic desire to connect with young people in the community. And they have both started with ten internships apiece and will continue to grow and expand that. And so, I just thank you for asking that question. Our public sector partners, who we thought we would begin with and we'd grow to, I think are really feeling the pinch of the workforce shortage that's happening right now and seeing the benefit of being an employer partner to this program. So, one of our primary limitations of bringing on more employers are the number of staff it takes to coordinate those young people and those employment opportunities. So, I think we've only begun to scratch the surface of opportunity with this program, and I think the cities know that, so, yeah.
What kind of partners are you looking for? What kind of placement are you looking for students? What do you think would be good places for them to be? You have a bit of a megaphone here, so if there's anybody watching that you might want to connect with to say, "Hey, come partner with us. This might be a good opportunity."
Well, I think that the best employers, the best employers are the ones that understand that this is not just a learning experience for the young person, but for them also. Working with a younger person means that you've got to understand all of the things that young people bring, that your employees bring, the parts of their lives that they don't have control over, like losing their housing or family choices. And so, employer partners who understand that this is a learning opportunity for them as well, and that also they have a direct benefit for this. So, you'll, and Louise could talk at length about the end-of-the-year projects, the capstone projects that students did this summer. But these were real, I mean, you guys probably, you know Judith Duran, right? She spoke at your graduation ceremony. She was also a Brooklink intern this summer. She worked at Hennepin County in their education area, and she was developing a logic model for the education work that they were doing and doing research. She's like eighteen, doing research, underpinning, "What should our strategies be?" And at that point, the city manager turns to me in the ceremony and says, "What eighteen-year-old knows about logic models?" And I said, "Amazing ones that are going to get amazing jobs when they graduate." And that's the kind of thing, is that those employer partners who give kids real work, right? Hennepin County didn't just have her filing stuff, right? They understood that she had a passion and a commitment. They connected her to that right project, and she really was able to dig in and provide them with a meaningful product. So, does that help answer your question?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Rebecca.
Yeah, you're welcome. Guys, see you next year.
Your presentations are always fun. All right, board members, our next item is the Consent Agenda. Before you use the Consent Agenda as printed, are there any items that we would like to have removed for separate consideration tonight? All right, seeing none, I would move that we accept the Consent Agenda as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Fortner. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? All those opposed? None? All right. The Consent Agenda passes on a six-oh vote. Let's see, our next item would be Action Items. Our first action item is to resolve to establish additional fiscal year 2018 budget capacity in the amount of $450,000 to add teaching staff and ESP support to accommodate an increase in enrollment above projections. Patricia Magnuson.
So, our enrollment for fiscal year 2018 is currently higher than projections by over 360 students. While enrollment tends to run higher than projections at this time of year, it is generally not at this level. So, we also believe that there's some identifiable changes in our patterns that are at play, which could result in these numbers being sustained. And those things are that Anoka Hennepin has restricted open enrollment at Jackson Middle School, Beacon Academy, which served a pro- School, Beacon Academy, which served approximately 194 District 279 students in grades K through eight in fiscal year 2017, moved from Maple Grove to a location in Crystal. Odyssey Charter School, which served approximately 194 District 279 students in grades K through eight in fiscal 2017, has closed. And we are continuing to see positive adjustments at grade nine and in our middle schools, which we can attribute to our grades band change. So that being said, I recommend that the school board approve additional budget capacity for fiscal year 2018 to add teaching staff and ESP support to accommodate enrollment above projections.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say that this is unusual, and amazing, and very welcome. We're always more than happy to welcome more students into our district, and it certainly makes sense to provide the staff and support that's needed to provide them what they need. So I'm encouraged. Thank you.
Awesome. Board members, any other comments, questions? All right, with that, I would move that we resolve to establish additional fiscal year 2018 budget capacity in the amount of $450,000 to add teaching staff and ESP support to accommodate the increase in enrollment that is above projections. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Stoffey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? With that, the resolution passes on a six-oh vote. Next up is a second reading of Revised School Board Policy 533 Wellness. Tim Palmatier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, school board members, and Superintendent McGuire. Adoption of the Wellness Policy, Policy Number 533, is an action item on tonight's agenda as the board chair has indicated. The proposal is to amend the wellness policy in order to comply with changes in federal regulations and reflect changes discussed and proposed by the policy committee. The first reading of the amended version of the policy was made at the last regular board meeting on July 25th, 2017. Four weeks have passed since the first reading, and under school board bylaws, if approved by the board this evening, the policy will be amended and implemented as written. The amended policy is required by law. The original wellness policy was adopted in 2006. Since its adoption, subsequent federal legislation and recent federal regulations mandate additional changes. The proposed amended policy here establishes wellness goals related to nutrition, physical activity, and communication with parents. It allows designation of wellness policy leadership or wellness coordinators for the district schools, and lastly, requires public involvement to help ensure equitable health and wellness outcomes.
Thank you. Board members, any questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, I just pleased to, to, I'm pleased at the partnership that's taken place between the district and community members, and I'd like to thank everyone for all their help and support in contributing their thoughts and ideas to this policy. Thank you.
Sure. Board members, any other comments?
I do want to comment. I was at that May 22nd meeting where there were many people from many backgrounds who came together to give some very good and positive input, and I want to thank everybody for participating.
Thank you.
Any others? I'll just echo a little bit of the comments that have been said before. I was really glad to see people come up and not just show support for it, but support for the process that went into this. It's not often you have people come up for public comment that actually have good things to say, so that's a, that's a refreshing change, and I'm glad that the process we've gone through has made that happen. So thank you, and thanks for all the work that's gone into this. So I guess with that, I would move that we accept the revisions to the School Board Policy 533. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Douglas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And with that, the Revised School Board Policy 533 passes on a six-oh vote. Next up is Gifts to the District totaling $41,085.48. I would move that we accept this gift. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Fortner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And with that, Gifts to the District totaling $41,085.48 is graciously accepted. Next up is informational items. And with that, who did I ask to do that? Director Fortner.
Announcements and negotiations strategies meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017, at 7:00 PM in Room N10 at the Educational Service Center. This meeting will be closed to the public. A school board work session will be held on Tuesday, September 12th, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the Forum Room at the ESC. The topics will be budget planning for fiscal year 2019, tax levy for taxes payable in 2018, and World's Best Workforce Strategic Plan Goal: College and Career Readiness; Career Technical Program. This meeting will be open to the public. A regular school board meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 19th, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the Board Room at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public. A negotiations strategies meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 19th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in Room N10 at the ESC. This meeting will be closed to the public. A policy committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 26th, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the Board Room at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public.
Thank you. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. I would move that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Craig. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And with that, we are adjourned at 6:58 PM. Thanks, everyone.